Good evening. I'd like to open the July 23 meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. On the agenda tonight, we have a board presentation and discussion of the Hazard Mitigation Plan being prepared by MAPC, a continued public hearing on the Medical Marijuana Facility, approval not required for the Patent Family Limited Partnership, master planning residential forum recap, and board business. So first up is a presentation and discussion relative to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So do we have somebody that's making a presentation?
Sam. Sam Cleaves.
Sam. Okay, Sam. You've got the floor. Can we...
Big audience.
Can we get a microphone close to him?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for making time. Patrick, thanks for setting this up. My name is Sam Cleaves. I work for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I'm here just to give a... This is the second public meeting on the update of the Hamilton Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. And I just wanted to run through quickly what's going on with the plan. It will be posted online for your comments soon, within a couple of days, and we'd love it if the Planning Board can check in and just take a look. We tend not to review it in detail at these kind of meetings. It's just... It doesn't work particularly well. So it will be up on the town website by the end of the week, and we would love it if we could get your comments on it, and then we'll... Once we have those comments and public comments, we will incorporate those and send it up to MEMA. So, anyway, why are we doing this plan update? It's a federal requirement, the Act of 2000, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act. This is basically the federal government's way of incorporating all departments and getting everybody on board in terms of natural hazard mitigation within each community. The basic premise of these plans is that it will allow the town, once FEMA has signed off on this latest iteration of the plan, to apply for hazard mitigation grants, which are particularly useful. They've been used, for instance, over on Bridge Street, as you know, for enlarging the culvert over on the bridge there. So, the plan for mitigating this, again, for natural hazards only. This does not address biohazards or terrorism or anything like that. Natural causes, climate is built in to these natural hazards, so climate change is addressed to some degree within the plan as well. So what is hazard mitigation, obviously, looking at ways of reducing or preventing loss of life, injuries, and property by using the correct strategies, taking a look at what the town is doing now, and what additional actions can be taken in the future to safeguard the community. So primarily looking to break the... What's known as the cycle of disaster and rebuilding by upgrading before you get into a natural disaster situation, so that your infrastructure and your services don't break, and you don't have to rebuild them. So you're strengthening as you go, getting into... Looking at what you need. Obviously, in this part of the world, we deal primarily with flooding. A little bit further over on the coast is a different set of problems. But these are the six tools and techniques that are built in and around hazard mitigation. I'll just go there very quickly. Prevention, obviously, planning and zoning regs, subdivision and site plan, you know, bylaws, regs, and we are lucky in many ways to have a pretty strong mass building code currently being updated for energy and being... It's a three-year review period as well for climate change incidents. Property protection, again, can you do elevation, floodproofing, storm shutters. We don't talk much about hurricane roof straps around here yet, but that's stuff that's pretty common not too far from here. Again, public education and awareness. This has done... Been done primarily for flooding and stormwater, wetlands in our part of the world, and with increased activity around natural hazards as we have larger storms. Natural resource protection, obviously, really your primary safeguard, the best buffers, and the best thing you can do is to maintain your open space and wetlands as buffers against flooding and erosion and sediment loss. Stormwater best management practices, one of the significant items that the town is addressing right now is meeting the stormwater federal management, the stormwater permit as part of the plan update. Structural projects, these really jump out from most of the plans that we do. Again, examples like the Bridge Street Culvert. Most communities are engaged in some kind of capital planning, and they draw on their own resources as well as state resources. But it's grants like this that really come in handy when you're doing a pretty good-sized project like a culvert or a dam rebuilt. And then, and finally, for hazard mitigation, emergency services protection. So the expansion or protection of critical facilities like fire and police, roadways used as evacuation routes. I've worked pretty closely with Essex recently on looking at Apple Street as an evacuation route for when the causeway goes underwater, which it has done several times in the last few years. So how do we do this? We work with a team that's put together locally through Joe and the departments. This is the second of two public meetings. We are nearly done with the first draft of this. As I said, we're going to be posting that online. Patrick will post that. And then, once we have roughly a two-week review period for public comment, we'll take those comments and then submit it to MEMA for their review, and take their comments, make those edits, and then ship it up to FEMA for their review. It's the process that we undergo when we do a plan update, just sort of going around the horn, so to speak. So hazard ID and mapping. So we draw on extensive historical data. We look at the state hazard mitigation plan. The state has to do a plan as well for the feds. It's not just localities. We coordinate with the local team. Obviously, the folks in each community knows what runs into trouble during storms or needs to be fixed. Again, a lot of the emphasis around here is on water and how to move it and how to use it and keep it from damaging property and people. Just some of the other areas, flood zones, geologic hazards, wind hazards, all this stuff is historic data that we get through Mass GIS. Just some of the locally identified hazard areas. Again, Winthrop Street Bridge, which is still a piece that's going to be addressed in the plan update for further work. Miles River, as you know, the vegetation management plan is an outstanding project through the task force that needs to move forward. Chewbacca Road, Essex Street, and then, of course, the... Finally, the flooding issue, the overflow with the pond down at the park, coming across the Horseshoe Road and Tally Hill Drive when the pond overflow backs up. And then, some of the brush fire examples, which the chief has given us, they're pretty much the same from the last plan. Hurricanes, you name it. Average snowfall, about four feet is the average, 48 inches. And then, critical facilities. There's 55 sites, again, reviewed by the fire and police and by the team. When we do the update, you can see the types of sites that we get into. And then, the existing mitigation measures. Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is another required plan. That is your basic what do you do in the course of a disaster, is your evacuation, your emergency actions that is kept by your emergency management. Folks over at the fire department, Mass State Building Code, capital improvements, local emergency planning committees, and then National Flood Insurance Program, of which, of course, the town is a member. We get some folks who hold insurance through that program in flood-prone areas. Best management practices listed there, your regs. Tree trimming program, which is Hamilton's got, and would like to add on to as one of the actions. They'd like to do an assessment, and a warden would like to have a better idea of public trees that need to be addressed. And BMPs for brush fire and winter-related hazards. So mitigation strategies, we look at what's in the plan, what was in the last plan, what were the gaps, what does the town want to do in terms of actions, and what are the priorities. So these are some of the sample mitigation measures for the plan update. Number one on the list is to finish off the Winthrop Street Bridge with the flooding around the abutment, design and build on that. It's just an example of other mosquito trenches ongoing. Obviously, the Miles River plan is a big-ticket item, and we'll incorporate probably members from the task force. We'll probably take some federal money. I'm not sure exactly how the town will approach that, but certainly PDM could be a part of that if they wanted to be. This is a very common item, you know, large flood studies, so that may be something you want to look into. Again, the federal stormwater permit, reducing stormwater and flooding problems, the Medivac site for emergency medical response, continuing beaver control, adding a water standpipe at Sagamore Hill. I know that you're in the middle of an open space and recreation plan update, and the town has done a nice job of addressing some of the items from the last plan. There was significant emergency generation backup added over the last five to seven years. And then, again, as I mentioned previously, looking at public tree data, creating a database. Sort of, it's done more of on sort of a windshield survey basis right now, and then really it's sort of looking at an overall assessment plan for publicly-owned street trees, rights-of-way that may need to be addressed either before a storm or just need to be pruned for good health. So those are... That's not all of them, but that's just give you sort of an across-the-board idea of some of the measures within the plan that will be suggested, that have been suggested by the town. So again, you know, what happens with this? This goes to MEMA. Once we incorporate public comment, and then, once we've addressed MEMA's, any issues that they've had, we'll incorporate those and send the plan up to FEMA for their review. Once FEMA reviews the plan, which is typically just in a couple of months, we'll come back in front of the board of selectmen to adopt the plan. The plan is not binding on the town. It really just acknowledges... The board acknowledges that the plan is complete. They've seen it, and they recognize it. And then, you're good to go, basically, for another five years for these pre-disaster mitigation grants. So they do come in handy, and we feel that the plans, although they're not particularly exciting, and they tend to be somewhat written in boilerplate, that's acceptable to MEMA and FEMA, if you've worked with MEMA and FEMA in the language that they like to see things in, they are very, very useful in terms of having people have sort of an across-the-board look at natural hazard issues that may be impacting their community. So we feel that they're very useful in getting things done that way. So, again, I'll work with Patrick to get the plan up and posted on the town website. Comments can be sent directly to me at that email address, and we'll obviously repeat that to you again on the website. But we'd love to have the Planning Board and members of the community take a look at it, get any comments, see what we've missed, see if we've made any errors, and get your edits in a timely fashion so that we can complete this plan and get it up to MEMA as quickly as possible. So that's about it for me. Are there any questions that I can answer or hope to answer?
Must be the one you did for the Cape.
That's no joke these days, right? If you're down on the Cape.
Is there a deadline for either public officials or private citizens submitting comments before it goes to MEMA?
Well, I'm going to be done with it by the end of the week to send to Patrick. We typically will post for 14 days and let it know, just to keep it moving. These can always be amended later if people... If something radical happens. But this is sort of a pro forma. We like to get as much input as possible, but we also want to make sure that this runs through the cycle in a timely fashion for the town folks that are trying to get money back. I know that Joe's particularly concerned about being reimbursed for the work on the Bridge Street Culvert, which is why we really need to move this through. So...
I noticed that you included earthquakes in there. How do you address that?
Earthquakes, I mean, that's a very low incidence, you know, high damage kind of item. We, you know, fortunately, we don't have that many of them. There's a tremor or two here or there. Typically, we ask older communities in New England to take a look at older masonry buildings and look at unreinforced old masonry buildings to assess them, to see, you know, what would happen if you did have a quake. It's sort of an ongoing item. Most towns never quite get around to looking at all of them, and usually, by the time these updates come through, most of those buildings have been updated anyway. There aren't that many really older public buildings in existence anymore. Most of them disappeared when we got into steel-reinforced concrete buildings in the, what, early 60s, and most of those buildings are gone. But it's some... We have to address... Again, when you read this, you may say, gosh, you know, why did you write it like this? It's a little stilted because we have to write this thing to cover regulations that are written as part of the federal act. So over time, the regional planning agencies have developed somewhat of a recipe for doing these things, as have other vendors, to get them through MEMA and FEMA in a timely fashion, in language that is appealing to those guys, and that sort of checks their boxes and gets this plan done and gets the thing updated so that the towns can use them as quickly as possible. So...
Any other questions?
Great. Look forward to your comments if you have time. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
I thought it was a dead-end street. It's where the mill goes off to the right of the glute between Essex, between Hamilton and Essex, right?
No, Apple Street comes back out on Southern Avenue. If you start out by the bridge off of 22, and then you wind around, and you go around, and it eventually comes out back on Southern, by King's Court?
I don't know where that is, but I believe you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Item number two is continued public hearing for the Medical Marijuana Facility, and I see that the applicant has requested a continuance.
Do you want me to make a motion for the continuance?
That would be wonderful.
So I make a motion that we approve the continuance of the hearing for Green Meadow Farms LLC, 654 Asbury Street to the next planning board meeting?
Which would be August the 6th.
To August the 6th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Patrick, do we know that they're going to be here that night? Because I'm being on vacation, I think.
I don't know if that's going to be another continuance. I don't know if that's going to be a resumption.
So I thought they already continued to late in August.
It's been a roll-in thing.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item is approval not required, submitted by Robert Patton on behalf of the Patent Family Limited Partnership to propose modifications of property lines and a parcel otherwise known as Hamilton Assessor's Map, 19 Lot 4.
Yes. Hi, good evening. I'm Wayne Jelbert with Hancock Survey, representing the patent family on the property. What Patrick's putting in front of you was a Form A plan, and if you haven't seen it in advance, I don't have an easel with me to put it up, but I can speak to the plan once you have copies in front of you. By way of background, we were here in December to establish a Form A lot 6, which shows on the plan. Lot 6 separated off the house, the residential house that is numbered 652. Today's effort is to create another Form A lot, reduced frontage lot, known as Lot 7, and that will encompass the house on that's known as House Number 656. So the intent here is we had created one lot for one of the residential houses, leaving a house with the rest of the farmland, and now the patents have decided they want to take the second dwelling that's out there, put it on its own lot. You know, it's a reduced frontage lot, but it meets all the zoning requirements for the RA zone of a reduced frontage lot in the groundwater protection overlay district. So it meets all your zoning criteria.
Can you run through those criteria then?
Sure. Yep, yep. Well, in the RA zone, it's 80,000 square foot minimum lot size. Groundwater protection district is the same. The dimensional requirements for reduced frontage are 50 feet, which we have 50 feet, and then there's the add-on. We have to add three acres of area to the minimum lot size, excluding what we would call the throat coming down to the 50 feet of frontage. So we have ample area, ample setbacks. We meet the minimum frontage.
Not really, but...
Patrick, it looks like this is just the land adjacent to where the Green Meadow Farms proposal is?
It is adjacent to it, yes.
The Green Meadow Farms is to the...
It'd be to the west, I guess you'd call it.
To the right.
North.
Okay.
Just for people's curiosity, page 16 of the zoning bylaw, special regulations 4.2.3, in bold print, says frontage exception for larger lots. A lot in an R1A, R1B, or RA district need not have the specified amount of lot frontage, provided that the lot has a minimum continuous street frontage of not less than 50 feet and a width of not less than 50 feet at any point between the street and the site of the dwelling, and that the area of the lot exceeds three acres. So...
Seems to me to...
Any questions? Anybody would like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request?
So moved. I make a motion that we approve the A and R for Asbury Street.
Assessor's Map, 19 Lot 4?
That's right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so what we need to sign?
Thank you very much. Patrick, I can come by tomorrow.
Okay.
If they're going to sign up.
All right, great.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks for coming.
This one?
Yeah, that's the one.
Does that come off? Okay.
Patrick, all we're citing this, that quote that you read, that's in the zoning bylaw?
Yes.
What page was it again? Do you remember? 14?
I think I said 16.
16?
Patrick, the mileage is ready. Can I take a time?
Sure. Yeah.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, please. Let's start a couple more.
Talk about busy. Our house lot is 30 acres. And a 50-foot net is half a mile.
Flares like they used to, huh? Bud?
Showered recently.
Yeah.
As long as you showered recently.
Yeah, this morning.
Is that close enough?
Yeah.
And then I rolled around and over some more afterwards.
How many copies do you need? Two?
Have to be black?
Last one.
Want to date it?
Knock yourself out.
What's that?
Sure.
Does this one need to be dated, too?
They all need it.
They all need it.
23rd.
Yeah, what is today's date?
7/23/19.
Okay. Is that one, did I sign that one yet?
No, this is just next. I guess the paper. Paper comes back to you.
Just give them to me.
What'd he say? What'd he say?
Yeah. Patrick.
Thanks for covering me.
This is the switch for that, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't...
Okay. We're moving right along. Master Plan Residential Forum recap, the board will discuss master planning project status, public forum outcomes, and next steps. Patrick?
All right. I know the consultants are still working on integrating and responding to our comments. As you'll recall, we had made the major comment that the authors didn't really give us any creative approaches to addressing density, addressing our growth perspective in the community in a fit-in way. And they were told to provide us with a number of approaches that would respond to that. You know, we're not a high-density community, don't expect us to be, but look at our bylaws, look at, at ideas of creating duplexes and other kinds of things that give us a modest level of growth that people would, would support. And we're hoping for some suggested bylaw approaches from them as well. We also talked with them about when should we best set a public meeting so we can have this presented and, you know, get it posted and get advertised and bring as many people as we can. We felt like it was better to get past the summer vacation period and when everybody's busy with baseball games and Little League and all that good stuff. So we felt like a date in September was a better time to do it. I think that we picked a date at about middle of September and I wrote it down somewhere, but I don't remember it. As soon as I have that date confirmed with the consultants, we'll start focusing on how to get, you know, people geared up for the public meeting, get it advertised, maybe get some press, et cetera, so we can get more people engaged in it.
I don't remember correctly.
Yeah, I think it was a Thursday.
I was, I was particularly concerned when we went over the Canterbury Brook proposal that here you had 17 senior housing lots and they'd advertised for local preference and not received one inquiry. And, you know, it's generally been regarded from surveys, from town meeting, that one of the goals of our senior housing plans should be to allow seniors that are already in the town to age in place. And Canterbury Brook is about as inexpensive as you can build. I went and looked at them and looked at their price points and I just found it somewhat contradictory that there was no expressed local interest in buying any of those. And I began to think about whether we could somehow investigate whether or not the junction, whether or not Patton Ridge, what share of those sales had come from people that were prior residents of Hamilton as opposed to were just providing senior housing for the metropolitan area as a whole. And I thought about it, I went and talked to the assessor and she said, well, it's actually very hard to find, you can find who the buyer is, but where the buyer lived prior to that is actually a pretty tricky piece of information. But if you have any thoughts about that, it may be kind of an interesting thing to know whether or not all of our efforts at densification are actually satisfying a homegrown need and, you know, local residents are transferring from one house into those houses or whether we're just building, you know, higher density housing for residents of the entire Boston area. The question I would have about Canterbury Brook is what's the price point? They're 500 and up. They started, they go as low as 500,000 and for new housing, you know, you can't...
They're actually higher than that.
That's what I thought.
They're in the 650s.
Yeah, and I think that's too high for somebody who's looking for senior citizen kind of living.
Patton Ridge went higher. They were in the sevens, seven, 750.
But they advertise at 508 on their sign.
Not the advertisements I've seen. I saw specifically it was in the 600s.
And they're not posting the correct number on their signs.
Yeah, I, I got a question whether the starting point is actually in the kind of range that the seniors that, at least I have in mind, would want to use as a starting point. I mean, if you've got a lot of money and you're downsizing from a million-dollar house or an $800,000 house, you might want to take a four, or five, or about a five or a six. But if you're not and you've got a 400 to 500,000 dollar house, you're not going to want a senior citizen housing that starts at five.
Well, it's not really senior citizen housing, though. It's just locked that way.
Yeah.
To get approval.
Right, it's over age 55.
Over age 55.
Well, yeah, okay, 55, but still, the idea is still the same.
Basically a new house.
Right.
I think they're even set up to be single-story, are they?
No.
No.
So, I mean, it's even less interesting.
Exactly. Yeah, I think, yeah.
You know, part of this discussion too, when you, you look at the data that we've been provided relative to local incomes, we do have a lot of seniors that are, have very limited incomes and, you know, the idea of being able to provide those folks with residences here, I think they jump at the opportunity, but, you know, homes that are 580 to 675 at the, the starting points, that's just beyond their means.
But you can't, I mean, the general problem with housing in the country as a whole is you can't build, particularly in New England, new housing at price points without some subsidy program, at price points that are much lower than 500 or 400,000. You can build apartments, but you can't build, you know, attached or detached, single-family housing, which is what all of these are.
Maybe we should think about building apartments.
One of the big things that I kept pushing the consultants on is that they weren't addressing the high value of land here and how that translates into that final number. They didn't do that in the draft master plan, they didn't do that in the housing production plan. And, you know, that's where we need to have them start to, you know, to respond to that because that's not going away. And the only way it can be dealt with relative to creating units that are in that sweet spot of 200 to 400 is going to be through a densification.
Well, it's also size. I mean, I, in Canterbury Brook's case, they have less than $100,000 per unit going into the land. That's in terms of what they paid. So if you're selling a $600,000 unit, 80% of the cost is actually construction. You just can't build housing for much less than $200 a square foot. So those houses are all 2,000, 2,200, so that's 450 just in bricks and mortar. You add in 100,000 for each lot and then you're up to 550 or 600. You've got to give a guy a profit. It's just, it's just not, it's not meeting the need.
Which, which was our argument when we were talking about cottage housing because that's typically in the 1,200, you know, 1,000 to 1,200 square foot range and trying to get four units per acre, which is what the senior housing bylaw allows. So as Patrick said, it's going to be density and it's, as you said, it's going to be size. You can't be building 2,000 square foot condominium or 3,000 square foot or whatever, you know, that they're doing in Wenham with those price points at 1.4 million dollars to start.
Maybe the other, maybe another approach would be that we think about letting seniors stay in the house they already are.
That's a...
But with property tax abatements, with some program to maybe bring the house up to code.
The problem is the deed restriction.
What?
They have to be deed restricted in order to get a home improvement loan and so forth. And the Affordable Housing Trust worked on that very hard and they couldn't do it because no one would accept having their, they want to pass their, their house on to some market or something.
To their children.
Yeah.
Or they want to sell it and give the proceeds to their children.
Yeah. But they won't put a deed restriction on it, so that's the problem.
That's if you're talking affordable housing.
Right, right. No, I'm talking about a lot of these, a lot of seniors do not have a mortgage, so they live in rent-free, but the house is a little large, it's decaying, it's, you know, it's not being maintained.
Bill, there are several programs. There's certainly a state program and I know two local programs where they can defer their taxes.
Right, I know that.
And, but as far as I know, there's no direct aid program for renovation and there's no mechanism in town that exists for giving them, you know, grants. We don't have community development block grants. So, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund goes towards affordable housing as Peter was describing, you have to get into deed restrictions. So the question is, I, I think it's a great idea, it'd be wonderful to help...
Use community preservation money?
That has, I believe to go, and I'm not correct on this, maybe you know, is that affordable housing that that has to go to?
Yeah, it has to be affordable.
Right. So we're kind of like, a great idea in want of money. So we're kind of caught in that catch-22. So the question is, how do we, and the only real answer to that is, as you said, size and then it's density so that you can, you know, you get the advantage of scale and, and the economies that go with it. So I think that's what we're, we're looking at, but I'd sort of like to think about, we want to get that date, and I think these are all very interesting questions we need to address, is really getting public participation and people there at this meeting. I think it's on the 19th, Patrick, but I could be wrong. Now, let's kind of, I can't remember that, but we'll find out what specifically is. But what we really, I think the board really needs to do is get the widest possible representation of, of public boards, ZBA, selectmen, Affordable Housing Trust, like to see the school committee or some school committee members there because they're all impacted, certainly the town manager, and go through, and we really ought to be aggressive at, at advertising this and getting it out to the public and drawing as wide a population as we can.
COA.
Huh?
COA. Get all those...
Council on, yeah, Council on Aging. I started making a list and I didn't unfortunately bring it with me. So, and I think, and I was beginning to think about this is because we're going to be talking about demographics, you know, what is Somerville in terms of age and population and income and what do we have for housing types and, and hopefully we'll see some suggestion, broad suggestions for maybe approaches that we can address some of the expressed interest in rental or cluster or cottage or duplex or what, or, or great estates or OSFPD, open spa, space and farmland preservation, which is really a cluster bylaw, which is all well and good, but I, I'm looking at this and thinking we really need to put it in context because it's going to be, you know, for us, we live it and breathe it, see it, but for the general people that we're talking to, it's like, okay, so this is Hamilton, here's some suggestions. Well, that's nice, thank you.
Yeah, it's just nice.
But, oh, the other one I thought of is the finance committee and I really want the finance committee to be active in this because, and I drew a Venn diagram, which I'll share with people, I'll give it to Patrick and send it around, because if you look at sort of the, what are the prime components of, that drives Hamilton in terms of its schools, its town government, preservation, public support, public services, it's, it's housing because it's 97% of our tax revenue. And I, I think that people need to under, sort of see it visually or, we need to tell them a story and say, hey, guys, this is where all our funds to operate our public operations come from, your, the land that's available, the houses that you live in. And also I think it's important to show them sort of what's available to be built on because if you look at all the preserved land that's in, owned by the state or Green Belt or is in land trusts or conservation restrictions that can't be developed, about 70% of Hamilton is, is, is restricted in, in development. So that leaves 30% left and then you've got to exclude all the stuff that's excluded by wetlands and, so there's a really small part of, and I don't have that number, that actually can be used to grow our tax base or impact our tax base. So I think that's a story that needs to be woven in with this so that people get, oh yeah, okay, so here's where revenue comes from, here's what we can actually do with the remaining land that we could do something with, and here is the need so that they actually have a sort of sense, okay, okay, and so here's what we were thinking about. Now, we could do nothing and maybe this is where the finance committee comes in or, or whatever, we can do nothing and in that case, we're not addressing the need that's been expressed, but more importantly, at least from my perspective, maybe others as well, is we are on a road to increasing taxes. So we become more and more expensive, which typically is going to eliminate more and more people from actually settling in the town. As it is, we're losing population, that's what the demographics tell us. So it's not, it's not a prescription for a robust, diverse, economically stable community. So I, I think that kind of like picture needs to be painted so people have some context from which to make their decisions. I don't know if that makes sense to you guys, but I was just sort of thinking about that and wonder if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yep, because it shows the different, the different components and the direction that we're going.
Well, I'd just like to put some sort of reality to it rather than saying, you know, here we are, you know, and people can say, okay, well, that's fine and, you know, leave us to battle it out and just say, but guys, this is, you've got to remember, this is how it's going to impact you. So, and people may say, in, in total, that's fine, we'll live with it, just leave it alone. But I think that's the kind of discussion that needs to be had. Rather than having the planning board out there pushing a perspective, whatever that might be, cottage housing or duplexes, the community needs to come to some understanding of what it wants and what it wants to see because I'm not particularly interested in, when we did with senior housing, going through three town meetings and three, probably four or five years of rehashing this and battling and, and... I don't know if that makes sense to you guys, but I was just sort of thinking about that and wonder if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yep. Because it shows the different, the different components and the direction that we're going.
Well, I'd just like to put some sort of reality to it rather than saying, you know, here we are, you know, and people can say, okay, well, that's fine. And, you know, leave us to battle it out and just say, but guys, this is, you gotta remember, this is how it's going to impact you. So, and people may say, in, in total, that's fine. We'll live with it. Just leave it alone. But I think that's the kind of discussion that needs to be had. Rather than having the planning board out there pushing a perspective, whatever that might be, cottage housing or duplexes, the community needs to come to some understanding of what it wants and what it wants to see. Because I'm not particularly interested in, when we did with senior housing, going through three town meetings and three, probably four or five years of rehashing this and battling and, and it, I'm not going to do that. I've been there, done that. I want the community to sort of say collectively, to the degree that we can get them, here's what we think makes the most sense. Go do it.
Well, if you look at what the market is saying, the market wants to build 900,000 dollar, 1.2 million dollar single-family houses. Anytime anybody gets a Form B, whether it's on Wen- off of Dodger's Row, that's what they're doing. They're building for people who are 35 years old and have two kids and want to move to the suburbs and have a good school system. And that's what the market sees as the value of the town.
Well, is that the market or is that the profit-driven market?
Well, they're one, they're one in the same, they're one in the same thing.
Especially because, what's the name? The Franza, Harbor-like Community Partners, is not a profit-driven organization. So they were going to draw, they wanted to build something that's a lot less expensive and a lot lower price point.
Yeah, but that's not market because they're getting, they're, they're getting huge amounts of back-end subsidy from the federal government in terms of construction. Plus they're getting rent supplement tenants. It's a, it's a hugely subsidized program.
That may be. But nonetheless, it's, it's a type of market and a type of, of selling and doing. And-
Well, I, I want to jump in there because, you know, this is, this is an excellent argument and it's something we will certainly get into in great detail. But I would just say, Bill, I think we've got to keep an open mind. The market is building what the market is allowed to build. And that's single-family, large, single-family homes or in our town, senior housing. That's it. There's nothing else they have. So there isn't a cottage housing bylaw. There's not a duplex bylaw. There's no other option that is attractive to the market other than building single-family houses because there's no zoning that allows anything other than-
Well, there is, we have quarter acre zoning. How much land is there? You know, Patrick, that might be a good thing. How much vacant land is there in R, R A, R 1, R 2 and R, what's the quarter acre? We still have some land.
Not much.
How much?
Yeah, the housing production plan, yeah, does a lot of mapping, which I, I think is really illustrative. It illustrates how little of the town is really remaining for development purposes.
Of any kind, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I can't believe there wouldn't be a market for something that was worth, that costs less than that. There would be people to buy it if it was 400,000.
You can't build new housing for 400,000. I mean, you can build apartments-
Well, you can if you have density.
Yeah.
That's the whole point.
Uh, density is-
Bill, you've got your mindset oriented towards large, high-value house. And you can't do that.
It doesn't have to be 2 million dollar houses. I'm saying you can't build in this part of the country 400,000 dollar attached houses. It's really difficult.
So where is everybody living that doesn't make enough money?
Living in existing old housing, older housing.
What, what did you find out with your, your two acres down town that you dropped that as a?
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
The Hamilton Housing, no, what do you call it?
Hamilton Development Corporation.
Yeah. You had a property?
Still have it.
Yeah.
One acre.
Yeah. And you were going to build 18 units or something?
Well, what we're planning on doing, and you're welcome to come to a meeting at 7:30 tomorrow morning, is we've hired a law firm, an engineering firm and an architectural firm to put together all the data necessary to submit a site plan to this planning board for, and it depends on what the land will support in terms of stormwater, drainage and septic. The numbers right now are somewhere around 20-bedroom apartment building. That may go up, may go down, but not by any large amount. So if it gets approved by this planning board through site plan review, it will, we will then take that and put it out onto the market as a permitted project with the hope that developers will say, okay, you, you've overcome-
And you can do this without subsidies?
Yes. So-
What do you think they're going to, you do that, I bet you those developers will come in at about 300,000 dollars a unit? And they'll want to charge rents of 2,000 dollars a month, 1,800 dollars a month?
Well, we don't know what we've got, but could be, could be 1,800 dollars a month.
Yeah, that'd seem pretty good.
But there is no, there's virtually no rental housing in this town. And that's the problem is there's just, or people that want to come in or stay, whether it's divorcees or young people or, you know, people want to get out of their house and just be in a place where they don't have to worry about anything. They just be there. So it's not, it's not going to address all the issues. He was asking a specific question and I'm giving him a specific answer about that piece of property.
Where's your meeting?
Say again?
At what, what, I know it's 7:30. Where?
Oh, here.
In this room?
Yes.
Okay. I'll stay, stay the night.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot to talk about here and with lots of fruit for dissection. And we're not going to solve that problem tonight. But I'm, I'm more interested in getting the public engaged and telling us what they want to see rather than us telling them what we believe is the right thing and then having to try and shove it down their throat.
On the door, sir?
Because it's just, it's really too much work and I'd like to engage and have you, Bill, engaged in part of the discussion and coming to the conclusion that there are many different answers to resolving this problem. There's no one way to do it. But understanding we've got to do something. Or we're just going to be doing the same thing over and over again. And what's the definition of insanity is you keep doing the same thing over and again expecting a different result. So I'd rather have, and that, that's what the general population says, that's fine. Then we know what our marching orders are. But I'd rather not go off half-cocked thinking I know what the answer is without having the public tell me what they think they will support.
So how would you, how did you react to the town meeting of three or four town meetings ago when cottage housing was shot down, you know, seven to one?
Well, naturally I was just-
How do you, how do you interpret that?
Well, my interpretation was that it got completely consumed by the affordable housing frenzy that was going on in town at the time. My belief is that if we'd proposed that probably two years before, probably wouldn't have been a lot of discussion. I mean, it was the Board of Selectmen wanted to see it happen. They were before this board, you know, demanding that we have a cottage housing bylaw. Survey that Sean did indicated a strong support for cottage housing.
The Finance Committee though had misgivings because of its impact on the tax rate.
Who?
The Finance Committee.
I never heard that.
I don't remember that either.
They never came to us and said they had any concern about it whatsoever.
Who's the chairman?
At that time, David Wanger was.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking at this point in time to have the Finance Committee intimately involved in this discussion so they know what the financial impact is and they can tell us where the town is going financially. What do they see happening in terms of the town's need for increased revenue over time? And where that revenue is going to come from? And who's going to be paying that? Well, right now we know it's going to be the residential tax base. Well, I'd like them to be involved in this discussion so that if a proposal comes up, they can say, yeah, that makes a lot of sense or it doesn't because it's going to have negative impacts one way or the other. So I'd like to, everybody to be involved in this. I think the schools need to be involved in it as well. I'd like to see the school committee at least have a representative here. So, because they've got long-term visions. The town's got long-term visions. The town's putting together and has a capital management committee that's going to be looking at long-term capital needs, which is, I've got to believe in the tens of millions of dollars for roads and infrastructure. So, you know, this is all a wonderful time to be talking about this because when it all comes down to it, it's hitting all of us and the residential tax base. So how are we going to deal with this? Are we happy where we are? Or do we want to see something different? That's the question. And I want that kind, that kind of discussion. And that's why we're doing this whole thing from my perspective is lay the facts out on the table from the Finance Committee, from the Capital Management Committee, from the Planning Board, from the Affordable Housing Trust, from the School Committee. And have a discussion to say, great, you guys all want this stuff, but how are we going to pay for it? Are you willing to pay for it? And do you know what the impacts are? So that's the kind of discussion I would like to see. And I know people will say, I'm happy, I'll pay higher taxes. I'm happy with that. That's okay. You have that point of view. What are other people saying? And where is the consensus? Where's the majority lie? That's all I can hope for.
Can I bring up a different subject before we-
Sure.
Do whatever we're going to do when we get done doing it? That, there was a, sent around to all of us, a proposal for some kind of a conservation bylaw. I think everybody-
Can we talk about that under new business?
Huh?
Can we do that under new business?
Sure.
Or board business?
Sure.
So anyway, that's all, you know-
Okay.
So hopefully, maybe on August 9th, we'll have the date and maybe we can have a more focused discussion on how to make all this happen.
I'll send it out as soon as the consultant gets back to me.
And I'd just love to see, once we have that date, is get the library locked in if we can.
Sure.
And hopefully we can get cable there, even though I know they don't have facilities. Or maybe we can tape it for future broadcast.
Yeah, they can do the library.
Okay, great. Any other discussion on that?
Okay.
Okay. So board business, meeting minutes, committee reports, future agenda items. Do you want to?
Sure. Okay, so we got this draft that was taken from somebody named Wendell or a place named Wendell.
Wendell, yeah.
Town of Wendell?
Town of Wendell. I know a Wendell Ketchum. At any rate, it was, I'd forgotten how many pages long, but I read the whole thing. And then I go, wait a minute, let's read the, whatever else there is. And got directed to the conservation, no, yeah, the Conservation Commission on their website has a conservation bylaw.
Bylaw.
And-
Pretty redundant.
It's pretty redundant. And there was very little, I saw no added value that I could see in my inexperienced eye in reading this draft, this Wendell report. I thought Wendell's was more poorly written than ours, first of all. And-
Get to it.
Can I, can, let me-
Do you have any further comment?
Well, just, it needs to be, first of all, is it going to go to the town council? Has anybody seen any added value to that draft from Wendell? And is there any value to it?
What was that? Yeah.
That was a proposed conservation bylaw. Not a zoning bylaw, but a regular town bylaw that one of the selectmen believed to be appropriate to start advancing with the community. I'm unaware of efforts to engage the public about it. I don't know, you know, where it stands with the Conservation Commission.
Why does it have Hamilton on the top then? I don't understand it.
It was written by, you know, I, I presume that was the selectman that prepared it, provided it to the town manager. I had been asked for that text by a member and I figured that this would be something that the whole board would be interested in because it's directly affecting land use. So, you know, I sent it out to individual members.
I can add some background. It's being proposed by Rosemary Kennedy. And I think this is a continuation of the discussion that, relative to the conservancy district that the town meeting repealed at town meeting last year. That was based on discussions we had with Mark Bobrowski and our then-town council because it had no objective criteria to be able to enforce. It was, it was a first attempt in the early 1960s to try and delineate wetlands. And it was observational and quite subjective, but it had no criteria to measure wetlands and distances from wetlands. And there was no, under the current Wetlands Protection Act, people actually have to go out and measure and do actual-
Very, very carefully documented.
Right, very carefully documented. There was a segment in town that include Rosemary that felt very strongly that the conservancy district should be retained. However, it wasn't. So Rosemary's bringing back this Wendell's bylaw to try and re-establish arbitrary guidelines about what can be built and what can't be built in specific distances away from wetlands. But it doesn't specify how you measure that or-
I read it and I couldn't find anything like that.
Right.
But why would we need this, given our conservation bylaw?
That's part of the question.
I think that, that is, that's a fair question, Bill. And from, and I'm the person that asked Patrick to get that because I had tuned in and was watching a Board of Selectmen's meeting, I think three, two or three weeks ago, and this came up. And Rosemary described her interest in seeing it put on the warrant for this fall town meeting. And I went, whoa, you know, is that a zoning bylaw? I thought it was a zoning bylaw. And I'm saying, well, you know, we've already gone over this. We've rejected a conservancy district. How is this coming back again? So, and I, as far as I know, and I've asked Patrick to find out, is, has the town council reviewed this and opined that it's superseded by our existing bylaw or the state's Wetlands Protection Act? Is it redundant? Is it defensible? And then when are public hearings going to occur? Because as I understand it, it's, all warrant articles are due by August 5th?
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't leave a whole lot of time to have that kind of question that you just asked, Bill, answered. So I, I don't know any more than that. I haven't heard anything.
Well- Yeah, that's all I know.
It's not adapted. And she wanted to adapt it, but it's not adapted other than someone wrote the town on top of it, but then they left Wendell in the middle of it. And it has nothing to do with types of land and so forth. So it's a regular old Wendell wetland bylaw.
And the other part of the problem was, from all the discussion that we had about the conservancy district, this doesn't do any more than our conservation bylaw does. It doesn't go any further and-
Well, I think that, and I-
I mean, maybe we could have somebody on the Concom somewhere look at it and say, you know, this whole part of this is redundant, but here's an interesting idea or this whole part is, you know.
I think you're going to have a hard time.
I think the Concom has received it. I don't know if they have analytically looked at it to compare whether or not this new proposal duplicates what their existing bylaw does. You know, from my reading of the existing Concom bylaw, this new text does much of the same thing.
Right.
You know, and, and also as I look at it, I think, you know, it, I'm not sure why it's necessary when you look at what the state, Mass. Chapter 310 CMR requires, which is, you know, 100-foot- which is, you know, a hundred-foot bordering wetlands protective, you know, buffer. You know, and, and it also, I noticed that it did not include banks, which, you know, banks are protected within the Rivers Protection Act, which was approved like nineteen ninety.
Right.
You know, which, to me, that makes that already violative of another state law. So there's some issues that that text needs to deal with.
Talk with Rosie.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
You want to, I mean, I know her, you know her too?
Sure.
And just, and just say, look, um, why don't we table this and look at the, look at the issues it raises and see if it fills in any gaps? And if it doesn't, we, we already have what we need.
Yeah, I don't think it fills in any gaps at all.
Well, I'd be happy to talk with her because I just think it's totally misguided right now. It's very confusing. But she was on the.
Right.
Um, committee that wanted to, it was the Open Space Committee was proposing it, yeah.
So I think maybe that would be good for you to talk to her.
I'll go back and find out.
I'll go talk with her.
Next meeting if I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
That's the way to do it.
Meeting minutes?
Uh, can I, can I, uh, put this out there? You have received a couple of invitations from me regarding, uh, this discussion regarding, um, water. Uh, water use, water production, et cetera. That meeting is to be held, it's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, Town Staff. It's to be held Monday night, July twenty-ninth, uh, starting at six-thirty PM. Uh, this will be at the Hamilton American Legion, which is at thirty-seven School Street.
I got it.
So, uh, look forward to seeing everybody there. I know that.
It's bothering the meeting.
Uh, actually, the presenter, as I understand it, is going to be Ray Mieras, who has been the town's consultant specialist regarding water resources for quite some time. And he, he's quite, you know, in command. So, you know, I definitely intend to go.
Well, I will too, but is there a real agenda item? Do they have something that they're proposing or?
Um, just look at your invitation.
No, I read it.
Okay.
Put it down, but, uh, they're going to change the way they process water?
I don't, here's what.
Submit the lines or something or?
Here's what you probably read if you read this, as I sent it to you. How much water do we have?
Yeah.
I know this, uh, you know, Green Meadows Project sparked a lot of discussion about that. Uh, is there enough water to allow development? Where do we get our water from? Why is there always a water ban? Why does it cost so much? What do we do to treat our water for? Is there enough? How do we protect our water sources? Those are the kinds of things that they'll be addressing.
In anticipation of Green Meadow, I went and looked at the state data. They have all the cities and towns and what aquifer each city and town draws its water from, where the water comes from, and how near capacity they are and what kind of caps there are, if any, on municipal use of water. And it was really interesting. Um, a lot of places have got huge amounts of reserves. And then there's Hamilton, which is, you know, like ninety-five percent of its capacity. And that was two years ago.
Yeah, but it's actually about seventy percent of its capacity, according to, uh, Tim Olson. Because I talked to him about that. But anyway, that'll get talked about. The one thing that I'd love to see on the agenda, unfortunately, I can't be there, is what is the town doing to enforce its water ban? Because I can tell you, I've seen, you know, when that water ban goes up and the big banner is up there and then I drive by and people have got their spring, automatic sprinkler systems going. I'm sure this is political heresy, but I'm, I'm going to say, we don't have a water problem. We have a water usage problem. And it's only really in three months of the year, and it's July, August, and September, that we are constrained. And that's because people are out watering their lawns wildly. So I'd like to know what the town is doing to enforce its own water regulation, water usage regulations, so that we are not in this constrained, um, situation all the time. Yes, we need to find more water resources. Our aquifer, the Ipswich River Basin is, is strained by too many communities drawing from it. So if we can get into the Manchester, whatever, Cape Ann Aquifer, that would be great because evidently it's quite large and underutilized currently. But given the situation we have is, I, just people are just ignoring any kind of water ban. And they're just, um, and even when they're told not to do it, they just continue to do it because there's no enforcement.
And part of the, part of the problem, it may be more not the lack of water, but the inability of the town pumping capacity to pump the water. Because I understand there's some problems still going.
I haven't heard that being a problem.
You can always add pumps.
I think especially we just, we just spent several million dollars upgrading the facility, so.
Well, we, we might ask Tim to come and make a presentation to us after that meeting because he's talking about expanding the, um, capacity. They want to build, uh, double the capacity up on Brown's Hill. And that's something that we've heard about on the task force that we're talking to, the.
I mean, they want a bigger, basically a bigger water tower?
Yeah.
I think it, I think.
The question is, do they want it above ground? And Tim has said, no, we just have to have it come up to the surface and have a better cover on it. But there's a lot of, they can blast out on the rock, I guess, a lot of stuff underground. But I, I would love to see a coalescence of the two ideas of a cell tower and a, and a water tower in the same place.
All right. Let's, let's, let's stop that right there.
I think a lot of those questions actually belong at that, uh, meeting on the twenty-ninth because the, I asked Tim some of the same kinds of questions, uh, for the Open Space Committee and he said, come to the meeting.
All right. Well, anyway, so I think that would be, it's a wonderful, I'm glad they're doing it. So hopefully, there'll be some good information. Um, meeting minutes?
Mercy was on vacation earlier, so the July ninth meeting minutes aren't available yet.
Okay.
Can I rub your nose in that one for a second? I got our Open Space minutes from July yesterday or today.
Well, we got prioritized out.
Yeah. Um, any other things that people would like to talk about? Okay, so the next meeting is August sixth, seven PM.
Okay.
We are not doing the executive session?
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. You need to read the top and then three B.
Top and three D. Okay, yes, we are going into executive session. Okay. I request a motion that the board vote to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing, um, let's see, three B. Discussing strategy with respect to litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board. So would somebody make a motion to?
Make a motion? Do we go into executive session?
To, to discuss litigation that would have a detrimental effect.
What's it in relation to? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, this needs to be a roll call vote. Um, we need to vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Janelle Curry votes aye. Rick Mitchell votes aye.
Peter Clark votes aye.
Bill Wheaton votes aye.
Daniel Ham votes aye.
Richard Boroff votes aye.
Okay, we're now in executive session, so the recording.